March first. March first. You want it by.
Yes.
Councillor Donald Trump. Yes, sir. And the Father, thank you for this day and all the many blessings, Lord. We thank you for Valentine's Day and that we can love each other as we'd want to be loved, Lord. Be with us tonight as we make decisions. Be with every person, family represented here in Christ's name, amen.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Benell.
Present.
Bunce.
Here.
Honeycutts.
Here.
Hurt Patricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trigg.
Here.
Wector.
Here.
All present and accounted for. First item is recognizing police officers who worked to detail after the December tornadoes in Bowling Green and Mayfield. The Kentucky House of Representatives have recognized and awarded them with a citation of heroism. Bowling Green detail was Major Flat, Captain Jones, Detective Turcot, Lieutenant Fields, Officer Phillips, Officer Ward, and Officer Thuley. The Mayfield detail was Major Flat, Lieutenant Fields, Lieutenant Barton, Sergeant Houchins, Officer Vance, Officer Thuley, and Officer Garrison. And Chief, if you'd like to step up here and make comments, and two, I'd also like to thank all of the other officers that are in our department because they work, some of them double shifts, some of them overtime, to keep us safe here while the rest of the police officers were working in these areas. But you have before you the citation and information, and Chief's going to give you a rundown on it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'd just like to say that I couldn't be more proud of all the law enforcement officers here in Glasgow that work here. It's an honor to work with them. They go above and beyond. Several of them went to Bowling Green and worked for a week from the day that that tornado hit until the day that, you know, they said, "We're good. We don't need you anymore," and never once complained about it. And while they'd done that, the officers that stayed behind picked up those extra shifts and worked those extra shifts and didn't complain about it. And then Mayfield reached out to us, of course, they reached out to several agencies. Mayfield reached out and asked if we had some people we could send. I said, "We sent another crew down there." And again, the officers that stayed behind stepped up so that those officers could go, didn't complain about it, just worked the extra hours, the extra shifts, and we did what we needed to do. Those officers that went, it wasn't a piece of cake for them, you know? They were shot at, they had, you know, a lot of things going on, but they did a great job, and it just shows how dedicated that the officers are that work here in this community. So I have awards, which I gave you a copy of it, that each one will receive, and this is really great, coming from the House of Representatives. It's a very special award, so I'm very proud of them. Officer Howard Garrison. Thank you. Officer Johnny Vance is unable to be here tonight due to being in in-service, but his son is here to accept his award on his behalf. Sergeant Wesley Hicks. Officer Josh Harden. Sergeant Nick Houchins is unable to be here tonight due to he has COVID, so he's out. Major, were you coming to accept his award and not because yours was next? Major Terry Flat also received one. He actually led the team that went to Mayfield. He also led the team that went to Bowling Green, so, thank you. Lieutenant Jesse Barton. And Lieutenant Steven Fitts. Thank you. We couldn't do what we do without people like this, so, again, thank you. The ones that went to Bowling Green, they received a letter from the chief of Bowling Green expressing his thanks and to the city, which I also gave you a copy of it, but again, thank you for allowing them to receive their awards tonight up here.
Chief, another little tidbit. There's a gentleman that went to school at Glasgow, and he was actually raised by friends of mine. He is now on the Police Department in Mayfield, and he called me last weekend and talked about what a lifesaver they were and that they really appreciated coming into his town and helping out like he did. So they appreciate what's been done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Ying Elliott with the U.S. Small Business Administration is going to speak to us tonight regarding the Presidential Declaration KY 17286. Ms. Elliott, you'll go up to the microphone. What was yours?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to introduce myself and our programs. My name is Ying Elliott. I'm a communications specialist from SBA, the Small Business Administration. I have been assigned to serve the declaration in four counties, including this one. Before I say anything else, I want to express my real feelings. My heart goes to those who have been affected in this tremendous and devastating disaster. When disaster strikes, we are present to help. We cooperate with other federal agencies, including FEMA, to provide assistance that usually are not available. Please do not let the word in our title mislead you. Following major disasters, SBA is the major resource of federal recovery assistance. In times of disaster, SBA assistance, not only business of small businesses, but businesses of all sizes. Also, we help homeowners, renters, and private nonprofit organizations. Under-served communities, faith-based organizations, places of worship are also eligible to apply for SBA disaster loans. What kind of assistance that we provide? The SBA assistance is in the form of low-interest, long-term government loans. When I say low interest, the interest can be as low as 2.83% for businesses, 1.875% for nonprofit organizations, and 1.4% for business for homeowners and renters with terms up to 30 years. Loan amounts and terms are set by SBA based on each applicant's financial condition. In fact, we do check applicants' credit history, but we do not require really excellent credit history. As long as the history is acceptable, satisfactory, we will consider the applications. The amount of the loan is based on the amount of damages lessed the recovery received from other resources. Take an example, a home and its contents incurred 100,000 damages during disaster. If the owner received a grant from FEMA, 3,000 and additional 33,000 from the insurance company, then SBA will consider $60,000. So we only cover the uninsured, uncompensated loss. How much can you borrow? That's a question that probably many people want to know. For businesses of all sizes and private nonprofit organizations may borrow up to $2 million to replace or repair disaster damaged business assets such as buildings, inventory, machinery, equipment, furniture, and fixture. That's business of all sizes for this physical disaster. If the small business and most nonprofit organizations suffer economic loss, they can also apply for idle economic injury disaster loan. When I say idle, that does not mean you have to suffer from the physical disaster. For example, if you are a resident owner, during disaster, your resident is intact physically, but you suffer from fewer customers, still you can apply for idle, for the economic injury disaster loan. Homeowners can borrow up to $200,000 to repair and replace disaster damaged real estate. Also, homeowners and renters are eligible for loan up to $40,000 to repair the personal property, such as furniture, applicants, and also your vehicles. We have a special program, that's the mitigation program. That program is for additional amount, 20%. 20% of the physical damage can be added to your total amount. The mitigation, we have some examples for you to, for your reference, such as you want to add retaining wall, sun pump, safe rooms, or storm shelters, you can consider this mitigation. That's another 20%. How to apply? To be considered for all forms of federal disaster systems, we advise applicants to register with FEMA first. The application can be done online. The website is disastersystem.gov. Again, the website is disastersystem.gov. Also, you can download FEMA application. Also, you can also call the 800 number. The number is 800-621-3362. 800-621-3362. Submitting an SBA disaster loan application is an essential part for the recovery process. I do understand many people may have all kinds of hesitation to take a loan, but I want to really stress this point. Filling the application from SBA form is an essential part to be considered for other federal release. For example, if for some reason your application is declined by SBA, we will refer you automatically to FEMA for consideration of other systems. But if you skip the SBA step, next step will automatically just disappear. So if you are referred from FEMA for SBA loan, please, please do complete the application because we have this kind of federal release loop. You finish one step, then you can move forward to another step. SBA application can be done in three ways. You can apply online, that's disasterselon.sba.gov, or you can go to the recovery center. We have business recovery centers, BRC. In Kentucky, we have three BRCs. We also have representatives in every FEMA disaster recovery center, so no matter DRC or BRC, we always have representatives to help you. Some people may hesitate to fill in the form, may think it's too difficult, but our representatives can help you one by one to finish the application form. And also, we have the 800 number, 800-659-2955. I have to say, these people, they are very passionate, they have expertise, they have the knowledge, and they really want to help. They work seven days a week. And the average time to process the application is two to three weeks. The first disbursement normally is made within three to five days after receiving the signed no-closing documents. This question has been asked multiple times. Why should I consider a SBA loan? To put it in a simple way, because it is a government loan, no cost to apply, and no obligation to accept, just as I mentioned. You probably apply for this application, if you apply, but you hesitate to take it, it's okay. Even if you are approved, you don't have to take it, but you probably can be moved to next step for other consideration. And there is no closing cost, no repayment penalty. If you want to repay in advance, it's okay, no penalty at all. The first payment is deferred 18 months from the date of promissory note, which means you will have more time to recover, to rebuild. In fact, this is the first time we come with this 18 months. Earlier, we normally only have 12 months. SBA loans, if you earlier take a previous loan, for example, some people may have already applied for COVID loan, you still can apply for this disaster loan because disaster loan is not, because we have the kind of overlap loan as long as you do not mix them together. So if you have a COVID loan, you still can apply for this disaster loan. My suggestion for the survivors is do not hesitate to apply because you don't have to settle, don't have to wait for the insurance to settle. If you do not know how much money you need, you still can apply as long as you promise that once you get the insurance, you will use the insurance proceeds to reduce the loan. SBA will consider to loan up to its loan limit, which means we will just give you the money of your total loss. Later, you can pay us back. The filing deadline for physical property damage, we are considering to extend it another 30 days. The previous one, the previous deadline is February 10th. But as you can see right now, we have already passed that deadline, but as I just mentioned, the extension documents is under consideration, probably will extend 30 days because FEMA, the leading agency, has already extended. Normally, SBA would just follow the deadline as well. And the deadline to apply for economic injury is September 12th, 2022. I'm not a loan officer, so I will have to apologize. Probably, I cannot answer all the loan-related questions because many of these have to be decided on a case-by-case situation, and also, this field is highly specialized. I'm a communications specialist. I want to send out one simple message that we are here and we are together. Thank you very much.
Motion, Governor. Second, Counselor. Those minutes have been approved. No unfinished business, and the first item, new business, is ordinance number 2022, ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located at the end of Professional Park Plaza and at the end of Trista Lane.
City of Glasgow ordinance number 2022-dash-blank, and ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located at the end of Professional Park Drive and at the end of Trista Lane, containing 2.456 acres more or less, from B2, general business district, to R4, medium-density multifamily residential district. It appearing that, number one, PRI Properties LLC owner applicant has requested a zoning change for the property located at the end of Professional Park Drive and at the end of Trista Lane, containing 2.456 acres more or less. A schematic drawing of said property subject to the rezoning is attached here to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Number two, a trial-type due process hearing concerning said proposed zoning change was held on December 20th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property here and after described be rezoned from B2, general business district, to R4, medium-density multifamily residential district classification. Number three, copies of the findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission have been forwarded to the Glasgow City Council, which are hereby adopted by the Glasgow City Council and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows, Section One. The findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section Two, the property located at the end of Professional Park Drive and at the end of Trista Lane, containing 2.456 acres more or less, be rezoned from B2, general business district, to R4, medium-density multifamily residential district classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section Three, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the City Council on December 30th, 1991. Section Four, the mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, necessary to implement this action. Section Number Five, the ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attested among Simmons City Clerk, first reading, February 14th, 2022.
Having heard this ordinance read, do I get a motion to accept?
Motion, Norris.
I have a motion by Counselor Norris, second by Counselor Richard. All those in favor of this ordinance, signify to say a aye.
Aye.
So as opposed, like sign. First reading does pass. Next item is Resolution Number 2022-dash, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation in the United States of America for a grant under American Service Transportation Act.
City of Glasgow Resolution Number 2022-dash-blank, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation in the United States of America for a grant under Fixing America's Service Transportation Act, that's the FAST Act, and a resolution committing the local sheriff funds necessary to secure a Section 5311/5339/5310/5303/5304 grant application. Whereas the Secretary of Transportation is authorized to make grants for mass transportation projects, and whereas the contract for financial assistance will impose certain obligations upon the applicant, including the provision by it of the local share of the project cost, and whereas it is required by the U.S. Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Fixing America's Service Transportation Act, the FAST Act, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Department of Transportation requirements thereunder. And whereas it is required by the U.S. Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with Section 504 of Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the U.S. Department of Transportation's requirements thereunder. And where it is required by the U.S. Department of Labor in accordance with the provisions of Section 5333B of the Fixing America's Service Transportation Act, FAST Act, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Fixing America's Service Transportation Act, in the absence of a waiver from the U.S. Department of Labor, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with Section 5333B of the Fixing America's Service Transportation Act and the U.S. Department of Labor requirements thereunder. And whereas it is the goal of the applicant, that disadvantaged business enterprises be utilized to the fullest extent possible in connection with this project, and the definite procedures shall be established and administered to ensure that disadvantaged businesses shall have maximum feasible opportunity to compete for contracts when procuring construction contracts, supplies, equipment contracts, or consulting and other services. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Glasgow, here and after referred to as applicant's governing board of the Glasgow Transit System, here and after referred to as applicant, authorizes the following in regard to Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, here and after referred to as agency representative. Section One, that agency representative of the applicant is authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the applicant with
In fact, this is the first time we come with this eighteen months. Earlier, we normally only have twelve months. SBA loans, if you earlier take an previous loan, for example, some people may have already applied for COVID loan, you still can apply for this disaster loan because disaster loan is not, because we have the kind of overlap loan as long as you do not mix them together. So if you have a COVID loan, you still can apply for this disaster loan. My suggestion for the survivors is do not hesitate to apply because you don't have to settle, don't have to wait for the insurance to settle. If you do not know how much money you need, you still can apply as long as you promise that once you get the insurance, you will use the insurance proceeds to reduce the loan. SBA will consider to loan up to its loan limit, which means we will just give you the money of your total loss later you can pay us back. The filing deadline for physical property damage, we're considering to extend it another thirty days. The previous one, the previous deadline is February tenth. But as you can see right now, we have already passed that deadline. But as I just mentioned, the extension documents is under consideration, probably will extend thirty days because FEMA, the leading agency, has already extended. Normally, SBA would just follow the deadline as well. And the deadline to apply for economic injury is September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. I'm not a loan officer, so I will have to apologize probably I cannot answer all the loan-related questions because many of these have to be decided on a case-by-case situation and also this field is highly specialized. I'm a communication specialist. I want to send out one simple message that we are here and we are together. Thank you very much.
Those minutes have been approved. No unfinished business and the first item of due business is ordinance number twenty twenty-two, ordinance amending the Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located at the end of Professional Park Plaza and at the end of Trista Lane.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty twenty-two blank and ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located at the end of Professional Park Drive and at the end of Trista Lane, containing two point four five six acres more or less from B two general business district to R four medium density multifamily residential district. It appearing that, number one, PRI Properties LLC owner applicant has requested a zoning change for the property located at the end of Professional Park Drive and at the end of Trista Lane, containing two point four five six acres more or less. A schematic drawing of said property subject to the rezoning is attached here to as exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Number two, a trial-type due process hearing concerning said proposed zoning change was held on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property here and after described be rezoned from B two general business district to R four medium density multifamily residential district classification. Number three, copies of the findings and recommendation of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission have been forwarded to the Glasgow City Council, which are hereby adopted by the Glasgow City Council and are attached to this ordinance as exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows, section one, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section two, the property located at the end of Professional Park Drive and at the end of Trista Lane, containing two point four five six acres more or less, be rezoned from B two general business district to R four medium density multifamily residential district classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section three, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the City Council on December thirtieth, nineteen ninety-one. Section four, the mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, necessary to implement this action. Section number five, the ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest among the Simmons City Clerk, first reading, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Having heard this ordinance read, do I, uh, can I get a motion to accept?
Motion, Norris.
Have a motion by Councilman Norris, second by Councilman Richard. All those in favor of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. First reading does pass. Next item is resolution number twenty twenty-two dash a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation in the United States of America for grant under American Service Transportation Act.
City of Glasgow, resolution number twenty twenty-two blank, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation, United States of America, for a grant under Fixing America's Service Transportation Act, that's the FAST Act, and a resolution committing the local share of funds necessary to secure a section five three eleven slash five three three nine slash five three one oh slash five three oh three slash five three oh four grant application. Whereas the Secretary of Transportation is authorized to make grants for mass transportation projects and whereas the contract for financial assistance will impose certain obligations upon the applicant, including the provision by it of the local share of the project cost. And whereas it is required by the U.S. Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Fixing America's Service Transportation Act, the FAST Act, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and the Department of Transportation requirements thereunder. And whereas it is required by the U.S. Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with section five oh four of Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three and the U.S. Department of Transportation's requirements thereunder. And where it is, it is required by the U.S. Department of Labor in accordance with the provisions of section five three 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 B of the Fixing America's Service Transportation Act, FAST Act, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Fixing America's Service Transportation Act, in the absence of a waiver from the U.S. Department of Labor, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with section fifty-three thirty-three B of the Fixing America's Service Transportation Act and the U.S. Department of Labor requirements thereunder. And whereas it is the goal of the applicant, that disadvantaged business enterprises be utilized to the fullest extent possible in connection with this project, and the definite procedures shall be established and administered to ensure that disadvantaged businesses shall have maximum feasible opportunity to compete for contracts when procuring construction, construction contracts, supplies, equipment contracts, or consulting and other Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Glasgow, here and after referred to as applicant's governing board of the Glasgow Transit System, here and after referred to as applicant, authorizes the following in regard to Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, here and after referred to as agency representative. Section one, that agency representative of the applicant is authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the applicant with the U.S. Department of Transportation to aid in the financing of the operating and administrative types of grant requesting capital, operating, administrative, planning assistance projects described in the attachment. Section two, that the agency representative is authorized to execute and file with such application an assurance of any other document required by the U.S. Department of Transportation effectuating the purpose of Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Section three, the agency representative of the applicant is authorized to set forth and execute affirmative minority business policies in connection with the project's procurement needs. Section four, that agency representative of the applicant is authorized to set forth and execute with such application an assurance that the applicant will comply with the conditions of section fifty-three thirty-three B warranty as required by the U.S. Department of Labor effectuating the purposes of section fifty-three thirty-three B of Fixing America's Service Transportation Act. Section five, that agency representative is authorized to furnish such additional information as the U.S. Department of Transportation may require in connection with the application or the project. Section six, that agency representative is authorized to execute grant contract agreements on behalf of applicant with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for aid in the financing of the operating and administrative types of grant requesting capital, operating, administrative, planning assistance projects. Section seven, the agency representative is authorized to sign all grant budgets, application and contract agreements via electronic signature on behalf of applicant with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Section eight, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its adoption, whereas applicant is authorized by the City of Glasgow City Council to apply for and accept grants of money to assist in the implementation of a transit system or for transportation planning in the City of Glasgow and whereas applicant has applied to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet with the Federal Transit Administration of the United States Department of Transportation Act of nineteen sixty-four in connection with the section fifty-three eleven, fifty-three thirty-nine, fifty-three ten, fifty-three oh three, and fifty-three oh four project. And whereas the applicant requires assurance of the applicant's governing board relative to the commitment of the local share of the section fifty-three eleven, fifty-three thirty-nine, fifty-three ten, fifty-three oh three, and fifty-three oh four projects. Now therefore, be it resolved by the applicant's governing board, that the applicant's governing board hereby gives assurance that it is the intent of this body to commit its local share of funds necessary to support this project to improve transit service in applicant's service area as stated above for a minimum of five years from the inception of the project. Said local share of expenses is to be resolved from City of Glasgow municipal budget. Number two, that the applicant's governing board hereby gives assurance that it is the intent of this body to continue the operation of transit service or planning for transit service for a minimum of five years, adopted by vote of the applicant's governing board this fourteenth day of February two thousand twenty-two, approved Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest among Simmons City Clerk. And then there's the authentication for, uh, for it to be notarized.
Having heard this resolution, do I have a motion to accept it?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Witcher.
Second by the mayor.
Second by Councilman Vanel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The resolution is passed. That before I get into the announcements, that's the last of the business on the, on our agenda. Is there any city councilman that wants to bring up something else?
Yes, sir. Mayor, uh, through our conversation with, you know, between myself and you, uh, with Mr. Basil, Judge Exec Hale, Circuit Court, uh, Ms. Cole, we request your assistance in approaching the governor or Jim Gray with the Department of Transportation and acquiring a full-time driver's license facility here in Glasgow or Barron County. Currently, we have about twenty thousand licensed drivers who would have to commute either to Bowling Green or Columbia if there is any issues to acquire a new driver's license. We were at a meeting earlier last week about pop-up events for Glasgow slash Barron County, and the state has offered us three of those, three one-day events where they can do thirty-six individuals during that time, and we unfortunately beat up the messengers. I mean, they weren't the decision-makers, the guys that were here, and they received the beating because, think about it, guys, they're gonna give us ninety slots for a year, for twenty twenty-two. The other issue that came up was a lot of the licenses that they issue have on a, a little black statement that says, uh, you can't use these driver's licenses for identification purposes. And the concern is, is come voting time, when you go to vote, when you, you sign up at the voting table, you pull your driver's license out, and it says it can't be used for identification purposes, you'll be denied an opportunity to vote at that point. So this issue is up, and it's something that we probably need to be a little bit more engaged in. So I guess I'm asking yourself, Mayor, and Mr. Basil, what's the route we need to go as a council to see about approaching the, again, the governor and Jim Gray with the Department of Transportation?
Okay, Councilman Trigg. One thing that you need to add to that is you can get a license that is a, is a ID, but it's forty-eight dollars.
Right.
So our transportation to get these people to get the license is the first problem. And the second problem is you can't just spend twenty-four dollars and get this, uh, what's considered a certified ID.
Right.
But you can spend forty-eight dollars and that license says it's a personal ID. So it's almost like the poor are getting discriminated against because they can't get those licenses. Now, I'm not saying that as, as this body, I'm saying that's a personal opinion. And I think if we're gonna be behind it, the council's behind it, I think we ought to insist that if we can get to transportation, why is the twenty-four dollar and ninety-five cent license not appropriate to vote?
Um, Joe, I thought about something after we talked the other day, and I think if you approached, uh, our state representative, Mr. Riley, and our, our state senator, uh, Mr. Ki- uh, Gibbons?
Gibbons.
I get confused sometimes, uh, and approach them, uh, one of the big issues about not using that license for identification is in travel, uh, with airlines and so forth. And they could pass a law that says for voting purposes, this cheaper license is adequate identification even though it might not be able to be used for international travel.
Right.
And they could pass that law in Frankfurt, and, and, and that would alleviate part of this problem about, uh, people being able to vote and use that to identify themselves. And I think they could do that, and it certainly wouldn't be a big sacrifice in order to do that, and it would help people all over the state. So you might, you might check with them on that and see if they're willing to offer that.
And, and not want to beat this up too much because again, it's something that's above our favor. That's the reason why they told me to request have the mayor, our, you know, this council say, we want our mayor to approach whoever it is that's necessary because I wasn't, you know, a part of the conversation with our representative, but the assumption was made or I was told that the license, there wouldn't be an issue. So if you walk up to vote, they can look at you, and if they recognize you, then you can be allowed to vote. Well, guys, that really don't fly too well. I mean, you know, yes, they might recognize, Judge Hale might recognize, Ms. Chrissy Cole might recognize myself and you guys, but for every other citizen, they're gonna want some kind of ID, and if they don't know you, then you'll be, you'll have to leave. A bigger issue is a lot of folks have left Glasgow with the Bowling Green to get their license, didn't have the right paperwork and everything, had to turn around and come back to Glasgow, and then just said, forget it, I'm not going to get a driver's license. So, you know, we got a lot of issues with this. If we can get a facility, we thought, the meeting that I was at, we thought we were getting a facility bought to Glasgow. It turned out they just wanted a location for the little pop-up clinic. And again, it was a smack in the face, uh, what they say. So how, what do we need to do? I need to make-
If this council instructs me to go to, go to work at Frankfurt with Jim Gray, with the governor, with our representatives, with our senator, I will do that. I'll see what we can put on the agenda, if that's what your wishes are.
I would make a motion for you to do that. Absolutely.
I will.
Could we do that in the form of a resolution, that we ask the mayor to prepare a resolution for review by this legislative body at their next meeting so that we can move it forward as a formal action of this body?
That's fine.
And I'll go one step further. I'll, after I talk to, uh, Jim Gray, Transportation, uh, Director, and I'll talk, try to talk to the governor, I will invite the, uh, our representative and Senator both to come to one, to our next meeting and see if they can shed some more light on it, and we could, at that time, I think we ought to ask the public to also come to the meeting to show their backing for trying to get something worked out on this where everybody has the fair chance to, plus, we're not missing, we're missing a boat, too. If you don't have a driver's license, but you can get a ID, uh, at, at used to at Chrissy Cole's, uh, if you're not a driver, to use at the bank for cash and checks and everything else, and that won't stand up, uh, for, at the voting booth either. So we need to try to push for some changes for our community if at all possible.
Yeah, and in all honesty, the twenty-four dollars, most people don't have that to pay. And with having a regional, uh, jail facility here, I don't see why we don't have, because sometimes that's only a step from the jail is getting identification, and it's hard enough just to get their IDs where they can go back into society, but to try to get them to drive to Bowling Green or twenty-four dollars, it used to be twelve dollars. So, yeah, I would be interested for Mr. Gray, our senators, our congressmen, anybody that would come, I'd certainly be, but I think you're right, Terry, and a resolution for them would be the right way to do it. And I agree with you, but, uh, unfortunately, we have an opportunity this week, and I believe, Mayor, if you reach out to, uh, Judge Hale, the exact date that they're gonna be here in Glasgow, I think is maybe Thursday, probably our Thursday of this week. He didn't verify.
It's the eighteenth.
The eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth would be, uh, Friday.
Ma'am, Roger knows.
My name is eighteen.
The eighteenth, they're coming here.
About the transportation money?
Mm-hmm.
I think they're going to Bowling Green after they leave here or before they leave here.
So I was told that would be the opportunity. We may be expecting maybe on our slot.
When you, you find out for sure, Roger, and I'll make a point, they're gonna be at the street department, they're gonna be here.
I'm not for sure.
When you find out which place, let me know, and I'll make sure that I'm there. And I'll tell them with resolution in hand, I've been ordered to get with you guys and see if we can't work out a remedy to this. I mean, if worse came to worse, and they give us two months consecutive in the pop-up place, which is sixty day, well, not sixty days counting the weekend, but, you know, uh, somewhere in a neighborhood of forty days, we could process twelve or fourteen hundred people, and we could just go through the community and get them there. That would be a start, but we'll ask for a total setup to where we can get somewhere in a neighborhood of twelve to fifteen thousand licenses done.
And this is it, this is all our general information. One of the issues that came up was our thought processes was a lot of the counties, the total population is around three to six thousand people per county. So they only did twelve of these centers, twelve regional ones, and they felt that was sufficient to cover everything. Bowling Green is the fastest growing city, largest so-called community outside of Leicester, and, uh, they were, they were reluctant to give me the numbers, but someone had said that around maybe ten percent of Warren County had been addressed in this process. So if only ten percent of Warren County, that's including Bowling Green, has been done, and I hate to think how many we've had from Barron Slaves, Glasgow. So the need is probably there, it's just it's not been addressed, and we're one of the few states that doesn't have, uh, a DMV, a Department of, what is it?
Motor Vehicles.
Motor Vehicles and stuff. So, you know, we've always had that up under Chrissy Cole's office, and they're no longer willing to fund or pay the expense of having workers who get driver's licenses and identifications and those kind of things. So it's a, it's a big issue for a lot of communities, but it, you know, for communities like us of forty, fifty thousand, it's a bigger issue.
Well, you can go online and get the twenty-four ninety-five, which is not considered a, a, uh, valid ID. Uh, but to get the other one that is a valid ID, which you can use in federal facilities and to fly out of the country and that type of thing, you cannot do that online. So just, just saying we'll get everybody online and get their license, that's just for the, the non-ID, so.
We have one last question that we asked, and we didn't get an answer, that was if you were driving and you get stopped on by the police, and you pull out this, this driver's license, and the police is looking at it, and he says this ain't valid for identification, what good is a twenty-four dollars? You know, all of those questions haven't been answered. They said it's a bad one.
I have somebody text me, said they'd be glad to meet with me about the driver's license. That could possibly be our state representative, but it's under a different number. I will call that as soon as we get out of this meeting, and if it's him, we're one step ahead. So we have a, 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 uh, motion and a second to create a resolution to try to research this and try to get everybody on board to get this to happen in Glasgow and Barron County. Correct?
Yeah, I can write that resolution. That won't be a problem, and I can write it, expect it, and it being totally written with what you've said tonight, and I'm, I'm assuming that you are authorized to go ahead and write that and sign based on the note that we're giving tonight.
Yes. Absolutely. I would send it, I would send it out just so we have it, once you get it, but absolutely I would agree with you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that do not approve, like sign. We'll get that resolution put together, and as soon as I get out of this meeting, I'll return that call, and I'm thinking it's a state representative.
Eddie, I'm sure you're ready for it. When you start your announcement, say your numbers, we've got some sketchy, and we're always on. And, uh-
Okay. Under the announcement, there'll be a proclamation signing for Black History Month, Wednesday, February sixteenth at ten thirty A.M. at South Central Kentucky Cultural, uh, Cultural Center Museum of the Barrens. This proclamation is a joint proclamation between the city, uh, the city council, myself, and the Barron County Fiscal Court and the Barron County Judge Executive. Any of you can be there, you're welcome, and we'd like to have as big a crowd as we can have. Again, that's February sixteenth at ten thirty, that's a Wednesday. President's Day holiday closing notice will be, City Hall will be closed on Monday, the twenty-first. Public Works Street, Sanitation, Transit, Stormwater, Landfill Departments will be closed on Monday, the twenty-first, and Monday's Garage and Recycling will be, uh, collected on Tuesday, the twenty-second. Please have your garbage and recycling out, uh, uh, by seven o'clock on the Tuesday, seven A.M. Our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, the twenty-eighth, at seven P.M. in person here at City Council Changers. Any other announcements?
I just want to ask, Terry, I just seen a blurb on Facebook about the, uh, I forget what it's called, about the Glasgow thing.
Great.
Yeah. Well, can you give us just an update on that or where we are and what that looks like over the thirty, sixty days?
Yeah. Representative with Chandler thinks has been in our community several times, and most recently they were in our community last week, uh, met with the group, uh, on Thursday evening. Good opportunity to talk to some more individuals in our community. Uh, they're putting together the branding project. Uh, we're probably about three months out, uh, on that. Uh, our initial response, uh, survey results, we had roughly seven hundred and fifty respondents to that, which is a really good number. Uh, we've had some other, uh, public meetings, uh, regarding, uh, the branding project and looking forward to seeing the results, uh, from Chandler thinks.
And will they come back to this body, I mean, the, the results, and they'll come present to us before they run it out, is that-
Sure, sure. What the, the plan would be to make a presentation, uh, to the Strategic Planning Committee, uh, on that, and then, uh, the Steve Chandler and probably some other associates with his firm will make a public meeting and, uh, to this council, to this legislative body. Yes. Oh, it's- It's moving very well, and the community has supported the efforts thus far, so very excited.
Will we go on, I mean, will we, with that budget, or-
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Point of clarification, that was Chrissy Cole feels that she'd be glad to meet with us, discuss it, and work with us on it, so I'm sure that she's willing to man or work whatever we can, but we'll, we'll go the process with the other people after I talk to her. If there's no other announcements, I'd like to acknowledge, it looks like we've got a troop leader, or maybe, and we're always happy to see the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or whatever. Do you have something you'd like to address the council? You just heard to attend. Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate you. Is there any other announcements? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Lowry.
Lowry's made a motion to adjourn, and we have a second by Kirkpatrick. You are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for participating.